Much embarrassed them.
Which one is the team is that?
Reno.
Reno, really?
They weren't ready at all. It shocked them. So I think when they come up. Here.
All right, we'll get the meeting started. It's 4:30. Brian, can you take roll call?
Mr. Lyons.
Here.
Mr. Nemec's absent. Mr. Kinser?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Mr. Milfee?
Here.
Commissioner Brown is asked.
All right, looks like we have a forum. So verify, Brian, all notices were done correctly. I got the one item about the West Road.
Yes, the address. Address, but it's still, description is still correct.
Everything's correct. We able to move forward with that. All right, just want to remind the commissioners, if you had any ex parte communications or any conflicts of interest with any of the items on the agenda, just bring that forward once we reach that item. With that, we'll move to review and approve minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Any questions on thing, anything missing? Added?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of August 2nd and October 4th. As written. Can I do that?
Second. Right, we have a motion to approve and second, the meeting, the August 2nd and October 4th minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion is carried and it's been approved. All right, then we have one preliminary development plan for review. It's a pre-app for 1755 Warren Wagon Road. Claire Dreyer and Jared Hendy, I'm not sure which one is presenting. Claire or Jared online?
I've seen them.
I'm going to come in the door.
Quite possible.
That's just the wind?
No.
Yeah, somebody's standing there.
Yeah, you go first. Oh, sorry. Hi.
Hi.
This is Bron.
Help her with you.
Um, I have a single chair salon on Warren Wagon Road and so I need to come into compliance. I was informed that I'm out of compliance. I had my neighborhood meeting. Only two neighbors showed up, had a few calls from other neighbors with no issue. I don't know what else you guys really want me to tell you. But there's standard things people usually let you know, then any questions. There's plenty. There's drainage in place. Snow storage in place. Minimal traffic. The traffic on Warren Wagon is pretty crazy all year long. And I serve a handful of people each day. Minimum is probably five additional pieces of traffic. Maximum, I don't know, 10. What else? Anyone? Any questions?
And shop on the property, not the salon shop, but the other shop, is that anything that needs to be addressed at the same time or?
Well, because that one, there's no actual, well, you guys told me, but there's no business that occurs in that shop. It's mostly equipment and storage for my husband who does business off site.
And did you basically end up utilizing, because I know the house that was tore down there? Did you end up, you basically utilizing that sewer connection for the shop connection? So is there any issue with the sewer district in the connections?
I don't believe so, because yes, it was there was existing water and drainage in the shop that I'm in, so there was no additional water or, well, we run a well, so there was no additional sewer added. And if, my understanding is if we were to rebuild, which at one point we were planning on, if in the future we build again, I was told we'll do this process again. But if a structure is rebuilt, we will tie in to that same sewer, but the building will have to be adjoining a current building.
Okay, not a separate?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so here's one connection there, just, okay, so make sure you utilize that, right?
Right.
Any, think there's any other questions?
Minimal, I mean, I know the sewer is an issue, but there's minimal water used, it's this, it's probably less than a standard home.
Yeah. Brian, was there anything else that staff had with that one?
Not really.
So the hair salon shop and clothing too?
Yes, so this space was so big and it's a single chair, so I just have retail to support my business and then, or excuse me, to support the salon and then I love doing it, so the retail portion has grown. I still don't have any sign and I last year spoke to I can't remember the name of the woman, but Crystal, I believe. About how there are so many wayfinding signs around town that don't have a business still connected to them, so at one point I lived near Colorado and there was the liquid district signage that pointed to businesses that didn't exist. And there, the Roosevelt Arts District still points to the hub, which is a coffee shelf that doesn't exist, so my suggestion other than the biking signs, was that there could be a sign pointing to Bergdorf.
Yahoo Corales.
My business, hi, that doesn't have a sign. Because of the home business stipulations, which is fine. And replace some of the signs that are being used around town for businesses that don't exist, to rather point to businesses that do exist. And I tend to be the person that ends up being a tour guide for that end of Warren Wagon, which is one mile down the road plus everything else. So there's right in interest in what is happening down that road with no signage.
So people stop and ask you, what's going on down Warren Wagon Road or?
Well, where Yahoo Corales is, where Charlie's Gardens is, where Bergdorf is, how to get around the lake, which I'm happy to do, it's just benefit all of us, I think.
That can be something, that's separate from your permission, so you're not, yeah.
And I'm only mentioning that because I have no signage.
Commissioners, any other questions? I guess free, well, not a whole lot of do it, it's already there.
Well, and if there's things that are needed in the future, please reach out to me. And I didn't know if there was a what the ongoing process is, so please let me know if that is.
We were talking with Brian or with Meredith and kind of let you know whether steps, the next steps for the condition use permit.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. There. Any items on the consent agenda that any of the commissioners have any questions on would want to be pulled out separately and discussed? If everybody's good with the agenda, I'd open for motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Right, motion is approved and agenda has been approved. All right, moving right along, we'll move to the old business. CB 2206, CUP 2206, Design Review 2223, Scenic Route 2215, 2009 and 217, Simmons Street, Steve Callen. Steve here.
We are requesting to continue this one one more month to December 6th. Figure out a few final tweaks.
We need to motion to.
Yep.
Okay, with that being this item to be continued to the December 6th meeting, we need to do a motion. Move that to the next agenda.
Make a motion that we, we continue this meeting until the December 6th meeting?
Items. Continue this item.
Continue this item, excuse me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue this item to the December 6th meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried, we move to the next meeting. All right, we move to new business. CUP 2103 and Design Review 2133. 111 North Sampson Trail. I'm not sure who we have presenting. Hold on, sir. You can have your name and address?
Sure. My name is Bill Hamlin from Design West Architects. My address is 216 Southwest 5th Avenue in Meridian. And I am here as a representative of the school district. Also, we have additional representatives that are part of the meeting, that are part of the hearing that are available should questions come up or comments be addressed by them. Eric Pingray, the superintendent, is here by video conference, Jason Clay, operation maintenance director, and then also the consulting engineer, Joe Barton from Perrigo Engineers, so we'll probably toss in a few things back.
Okay, none at all.
I can start with just a broad description of what the project is, the I wish that's a good time for my computer shut off. Basically, it's addition, adding additional capacity to the facility that's there to meet some of the needs that they have from the growth that they've encountered. With that is approximately seven classrooms and multipurpose area that you're trying to accomplish based on program needs that they identified and prioritized. Also some leveling of some playground areas. So that's the basic project. I don't think there's anything real controversial about the building today. What we'd like to do is secure approval with limited conditions. Your recommendation for approval of the project, so what we'd like to do if possible is to hear the staff report, hear the comment and have a chance to discuss conditions that were in the staff report, if that's acceptable to you.
That'd be fine, yes. Okay, great. Well, with that, we'll go Brian and staff report.
With Brian's applications is for the Lakes Mills School to expand by approximately 12,000 square feet. Or about for room for about 125-ish students. Generally, they are planning on extending the south wing further south. Cover a couple of areas, do a little remodel, that's general, but not a whole lot exciting regarding the building. Yeah, modify landscaping, grading around the playground, parking lots. And then make some, they are proposing to make modifications to their transportation queuing and busing movement. They're planning on realigning the driveway to Barbara Morgan Elementary, so that it's making nice expanding the pickup and drop off area at middle school. Standing sidewalk. Down a little bit, so more vehicles can modifying the bicycle, that's good pathways through in and in out of the site. And then rearranging the traffic patterns, discussing spread out the viewing and conflict points. So the big challenge with this one is kind of the history. 1994, the school district got a conditional use permit for the middle school on this site. Within that application, there was a condition of approval to dedicate 35 feet of future right of way when Dyane Hard was proposed to be extended. Then jump ahead 10 years, Fox Ridge, something comes through. The original view of the application from staff, city engineer said, yeah, we should dedicate the other 35 feet and extend Dyane Hard. That recommendation went to the Transportation Advisory Committee twice. Their attorney convinced them that it was not a great idea. In that discussion, there was mentioned that the school district had requested that it not be extended despite the fact that it was part of their conditional use permit to extend the roadway. Eventually, that requirement was dropped at that time and no additional right of way was required out of Fox Ridge. Then 2007, the elementary school came through. It's pretty clear at that point that the traffic problem was going to be an issue, especially at the Dyane Hard and Sampson Trail intersection. There was a condition of approval in that application that allowed the city to review every five years and make modifications to the intersection as needed. So here we are, 15 years later, there's really no changes have been made. And we proposed site plan and traffic flow plan really, like I said, it doesn't solve problems generally. It moves around so that it's not, once they're there after one point, you want to have some strain on Dyane Hard. So that's nothing possible. Failing traffic conditions for the TIS. They have reached their capacity, even 450 students. Once they exceed 850 students, fails even with the reconfigured traffic flow on site. The fix for that, we have not fully determined, our recommendation is to grant the easement for the additional 35 feet beyond what is already required in the 1984 conditional use permit to a full 70-foot easement for future right of way. With that, that allows the city and the school district and future developments to the east all collaborate and find a solution that works for everybody. And that is to be determined at this point, but without that easement, without that potential roadway, there's no potential mutually beneficial solution for everybody. So that is the basis of the request for the additional 35-foot easement. And then, yeah, the additional items that's identified in the staff reports that need to be fixed. Some of the existing pathways are less than parts and pathways standards in width. Condition approvals, fail need to be replaced, they need to standard. There inadequate long-term bicycle parking per code. So they are required to put in some additional quick checking and then some additional landscape screening between the middle school parking lot and Sampson Trail to better screen it from roadway. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Brian at this point?
I got one. I was reading through the packet and one of the things that stood out was there was some material in there from Greg Pittinger. Stating in 2004, 2005, when he reviewed it, that there was no no easement on record, no commitment to that and everything was to proceed.
I suspect this was some some good attorneying. The going further back in history, back in the 70s, there was an easement granted for a future roadway through this property. Upon sale of the site to the school district, that easement was dropped.
Yeah.
From that.
So then it seemed like in 94, it was requested to be put back in there, but never actually got added.
Right, so the half, the 35 foot was put on as a condition of approval. Yeah, it was never formally dedicated.
So I guess the request from the city is to formally dedicate that 35 feet plus an additional 35 feet to make it 70.
What has the attorney said about that? I mean, because basically that 70-foot was, would be benefiting almost solely the new development property, because that's not wouldn't be something that would be needed for the school, so it's me kind of the sole benefit of that property. that property. But what's the legal advice on that?
Well, Bill speak, but we believe that there is opportunity for it to be beneficial to the school. One, it becomes a public roadway. They are no longer responsible for maintenance and plowing on it. And by formalizing it, designing it correctly to function as a roadway with ingress and egress to parking lots. There is potential for it to flow better and to work better as it.
Is it somewhat, I don't know, premature because if easement's there, and I don't know, I guess we're going to redo this a little bit, but that's something they would end up having to do twice. Because it would change quite a bit if all of a sudden that was a road going in there. Or change some.
Clarify that statement.
Well, just on the layout from what their, their traffic flow plan is, all of a sudden, if it's a full 70 foot road, they're going to have different accesses and entrances and accesses. How much is that going to change what they're doing now?
Yeah, I would, I would expect it to change the site flow, traffic pattern pretty substantially.
So commissioners, if I could provide a little bit of input, this is Bill Punkinney, attorney for the commission.
Okay, yeah, Bill, please.
Yeah. So, I mean, I think probably to put a finer point on what Brian is saying is, you know, whether or not the easement exists or doesn't exist. And, and to be honest with you, I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. It's kind of immaterial. It's the, the bigger question is, should there be one? And is it required for granting the conditional use permit because of the, the way that they're going to increase the use of the property? And so under the circumstances, I mean, whether or not there actually is or is not an easement is something that, you know, probably would have to be duped out in court. But from our perspective, you know, independent of that, what makes sense for the broader community if we're going to allow this expansion? I think is the question we probably, we ought to answer. Brian, I don't know if you have any input on that.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything else then.
And Bill, this is Michelle Grinnaval. I think some of these questions related to the traffic specific conditions of approval and the easement can also be answered by our engineering team because it really is more of a a traffic flow situation than anything else.
All right. Well, Bill, unless you have anything else, we'll probably go to Morgan and
No, I think that makes all the sense in the world. This is more of a technical question than it is a legal question. I mean, what do we need to handle the use?
I guess what you told there, Mike, the question is if we're dealing with the use of here and we're doing combination uses. So go ahead.
Would you like me to try to answer the question first or go?
Let's do your presentation. Yeah. Because that might, yeah.
Awesome. So my last or last engineering review letter was from December of last year. So we haven't seen an updated transportation impact study since November of last year. So not much has been in our, in our review. We still had concerns with the TIS and we had some tweaks that we were running through. Overall, we don't have enough information to figure, to know what the direction is moving forward and what would solve this problem. We still have to work through some of those issues. We are though, we know that this area is prime for development with all the vacant, the whole region in general, the southeast area of town with the large vacant parcels. So we, the city have actually started our own traffic study for this whole section of town with our consultants. And we're in the middle of that right now and we should have some answers by December on more of this intersection analysis and kind of combining what we're seeing with our accounts, traffic counts that have been provided. Just looking at all sorts of data and figuring out what kind, what needs to happen at this area to help accommodate future traffic, our traffic, current traffic. If a new intersection or it's a roundabout, so kind of it's all up there in the planning world and what we want to figure out. So we don't have all the details of what that intersection would need to look like. And we're not totally convinced with the proposal that they have given us regarding its its safety and if it will improve the intersection enough. We also haven't discussed a timeline. We started going down this route of the easement dedication and working through what that roadway could look like and how it could be beneficial to the school. The existing neighborhoods, future developments and connecting everyone and providing more routes to the school. So it's not just all centralized at the one intersection and kind of distributing it better. But we haven't talked in detail about what that would look like. There was a proposed alignment of a road, but we weren't totally convinced on that either. And we had our own concerns with that. But it was a jumping off point. So we are trying to work with the school and to see what, what we could do to make it work. And if the road isn't feasible, then we, we would know that too, working through those problems, but we haven't had enough discussions to talk about if it would be beneficial or not. That's generally most of the information. Brian talked about some of the some of the traffic impacts that the intersection is fine right now up to their current capacity. And once they exceed their current capacity, the intersection fails, which would require upgrading that intersection. So there's still some unknowns about the traffic. But we're trying to work with everyone to figure out what the best path forward is and not redo something. And having to rebuild things. And we need to redoing that.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan?
Aaron Mason for our engineers, who is our consulting transportation engineer, traffic engineer. Take questions free.
Does he want to add anything? I know we don't normally have that, but if he thinks there's something that could be added at this point that's helpful, we could do that now or later.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I'm, I'm here to support Morgan and Brian and and just letting, letting you know that I've been working closely with them. Horox has been working to, for, towards accomplishing this regional model, this traffic model for this area. And it, it would be it, it would probably be premature for us to, to, you know, from an engineering standpoint, from a traffic or congestion standpoint, to say if that road were necessary without completing that, that model. And so we are, as Morgan has, has stated, we, we are looking to get that completed by December so we can have some just to look at what, what is in store in the future for McCall in this region. So we can have an idea of, of what, what kind of facilities that we need in our transportation system here. And that will, I think, be a, a, a great starting point and, and, and talking to the school district. And with any, with anything in the future and development in this area of, of what really is needed. So that, that will help with this, with this discussion, I believe.
So you believe that if at this point, it was approved with a 70 foot easement right of way, that would cover any potential designs or build outs or, or anything with that intersection that would cover that?
Well, I, I, I believe that that was, that was stated early on and Morgan could correct me here, but my understanding was if that were to, to happen, then the school could move forward with an expansion and just kind of relieving them of, of some of the, of the mitigation that might specifically be, be needed for that road. But maybe Morgan could, could better explain that.
Yeah, I think that's right. We wanted to work with the easement as a condition so that they could move forward with their bond and get their construction going before having all these fine details worked out. So
70 foot would give you enough latitude. You wouldn't come back and say, oh geez, we need a 10 foot more for some weird roundabout or anything like that. 70 foot would cover pretty much all issues or potentials.
70 feet is our standard for a collector level road. So there should be enough room for a pathway and a roadway and drainage facilities. I know there's some topographic topographical issues at that intersection. But I would see maybe more of an expansion to the west if we did need more where it's more vacant and open, which might require working with Department of Lands, but the state 80. But we should be able to fit a lot in that pathway or in that 70.
I have a question and but 70 feet look like on that map? I mean, I see the existing road going into the elementary school. Like what is that? That's 70 feet. Okay, got you, got you. So that pushes, I mean, if you go to the east, that pushes all the way to the current parking lot of the elementary school. Is that correct? Or close to?
There is like a little 10 foot jog.
There is a jog right there. So that buys you a little bit of space, I guess.
Where's that? Right here. There's just a little jog.
And then Morgan, I think you said within that 70 feet, that's roadway and pathways.
Yes.
Okay. And any buffer or anything?
Um, we can work in buffers, but we haven't gotten to like what would be desirable or maintainable for all, everyone involved. So that design could alter, but with our standard details, it does fit a separated pathway and a roadway, a two lane road.
Any other questions, commissioners, for your staff?
I just have one question about this, these different exhibits we got in here with the dotted lines that shows the flow of the traffic and the buses and everything else is, is, what is that exactly for? For be, to be able to see if the roads needed or the easements needed or?
Per into this one?
I think with different options that they had.
This is school's proposal for how traffic should function on the school property.
Okay, you got six or seven different proposals. Is, is there one that fits the easement situation better than another one or?
No, none of them include a future roadway.
Any other questions at this point before we go to a public hearing? All right. At this point, we will open it to public hearing. We will first go to, we don't have any phone numbers or any lists in this one, or do we? Oh, we do. Hold on just a second. So first I will go to the phone numbers we have a list of. And then we'll move to anybody else online and then we'll have people here at the or Legion Hall. So you may be muted. If you are, you need to hit star six and give it a couple of seconds. When you speak, again, give your name and address and got about three minutes of it going to do the timer. So do we have 208? Is that 600? Or 800? Yes, 208-600-9181? Is that six or an eight?
600.
But once again, if you're muted, it's, you may need to hit star six, but again, 208-600-9181. Do you wish to speak regarding this application? All right. I'm going to move to the next number, 208-271-6591. 271-6591. Do you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, great. There you are. If we have your name and address, please.
My name is Erica Soucy, address 14141 Highway 55. McCall. Um, I guess this is my first time on one of these meetings. Am I supposed to speak to my application?
If you want us to speak to this particular application for the school.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Okay. Well, we'll call you later on with your application.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, we have a 208-861-8995. 861-8995. Do you wish to speak regarding this application?
No, thank you.
All right. We got 208-908-9574.
Uh, yes. Hi, this is Thaddeus Hoffman, 602 Woodlands Drive, and I do wish to ask some questions and speak.
Okay.
And thank you. I sent Mr. Parker an email a little bit earlier today that covered some of this, but first I wanted to thank, thank the city staff who put a lot of work into this meeting packet. There were a couple of items and, and Morgan maybe alluded to this a little earlier in the, the traffic impact study that, that are concerning to me and it looks like some of the conditions don't cover this and it's possible, I guess, that maybe the work that Horox is doing will. But in the engineering letter back in, I believe, the December 2021, when they responded to the traffic impact study, they did note that the traffic impact study did not was done not addressing the fact that the northwest and southwest corners of the intersection of Sampson Trail and Dyane Hard are potential future development sites. And we all know that's going to happen. And so I wanted to ensure that, you know, a traffic impact study does account for that. And I'm wondering if the Horox work will, will, will take care of that. I guess maybe that's a question.
We're just taking comment at this point. I'm sure they're making notes and they'll be able to respond later on that. So like, we can't respond to each individual question at this point. We'll try to get a response for you once everybody's completed their, their questions or their comments.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Just one, one other comment. And this again also relates to the, the, our, our city engineers' response to the traffic impact study by Paragon, but there's a proposed free running turn lane that would basically be taking traffic off of southbound Spring Mountain and moving on to what I guess it'd be westbound Dyane Hard. And engineers properly point out that that's a, that's, that's kind of a dangerous thing. That's not a very safe, safe way of controlling traffic at that intersection, which sees a substantial amount of pedestrian and bike and bike traffic. So I, my, my hope is that again, the, the Horox study would account for that as well. And that's the end of my comments.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. The next number, 208-630-4434. If you're muted again, you may need to hit star six. 630-4434. Are you there one last time? 630-4434. One's going twice. Okay. Move to the next number, 208-830-5549. Okay, move to the next number, two oh eight, eight three zero, five five four nine. You may be muted. Is he off mute? Eight three zero, five five four nine. Do you wish to comment on this application?
I have no comment.
Oh, okay. And then we got two oh eight, seven two four, two six two four.
This is Bonnie Layton with NV five. I'm a planner on an adjacent project. I'm just attending to hear the conference this evening.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. Is there anybody else online or on the phone that would like to comment regarding this application? All right. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to comment on this application other than the applicant? Okay, sir.
Somebody online raised their hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
All right, uh, online, I guess there is somebody you want to speak. Need your name and address?
Sure, um, this is Marshall Witty, six six nine Woodlands Drive. I submitted a letter earlier today to Brian, and I just want to make sure that it, it reached your eyes. I don't have anything else to add beyond my letter, but I just want to make sure it was, that you were aware of, that that had been submitted.
Yes, Marsh, I've seen it. I'm guessing commissioners all have it and we have it in our pa, our package.
Perfect. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marsh. Okay.
Council, our commissioners, staff, members of the audience, my name's Craig Groves. I represent Pine Creek Ranch LLC. Pine Creek Ranch LLC owns the property lying east and south of the school. Uh, we purchased the property in early twenty twenty and have been working with the city, with our traffic engineers, with the school district, I should say, this superintendent and the facilities manager regarding the extension of Dine Hard. When I purchased the property, I had no vision that Dine Hard was going to be extended or needed to be extended because our property, once annexed into the city, has three additional access points that would improve circulation. However, when I stepped back from the situation and I took a public policy, community view of the situation, um, I realized that if our property was successfully approved by this commission and the city, and we, over the next fifteen or twenty years, built five hundred residences back there of varying types with maybe as many as two hundred and seventy-five permanent, full-time residents here in McCall, that we would have two hundred and fifty students that would end up at the junior high and the grade school, or the middle school and the grade school. And from my perspective, to ask those students to exit out to the south and come back on Sampson Trail to the intersection of Dine Hard and Sampson, just to get back into the school, or to exit out Woodlands Drive, just to get out on Spring Mountain to end up at Sampson Trail again and, and Dine Hard to get to the school, doesn't make a lot of sense and puts more traffic concerns at Sampson Trail and Dine Hard. So I'm in favor of the school building their addition. I'm in favor of you approving this with the conditions of approval that staff has recommended with no changes. And I would stand for questions.
I just comment at this point, so we really can't.
Oh, my address, I'm sorry. One fifty four Shadows Trail, Donley, Idaho. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks.
Hi, my name, hello, hi. My name is Sherry Sonfield, and I would like to comment also after these other people did, please?
Okay, go ahead. You can right now.
Thank you. My address is six six four Woodlands Drive in the Woodlands, very close to the schools. I totally support schools and education and, um, and school districts and students and teachers and the whole thing. And I've sent you via Brian, um, my thoughts on the application. I support totally what the city planning staff has come up with, with, um, as far as conditions for approval because of the reasons in my letter, which I won't reiterate totally, so you're totally upset with me. But, um, the other thing is, the elephant in the room, that Craig just alluded to, is if there is no expansion, the three roadways that will go to that development, when and however it is developed, because eventually it will be, would be down Woodlands Road and two other roads that are not connector streets. They're not there and large enough to be connector streets into five hundred, seven hundred, two hundred homes back there. So I wanted to add that to my letter, and I also wanted to thank all the people that, from the schools to the staff, all the staff and all of you for all of your dedicated, hard work to try to, you know, come to a reasonable solution on this. It's a really super big problem. We see that traffic every day. And, and, and it's a tough thing to fix. So I was very happy to hear what Morgan described about the, um, study that's being done, and it sounds a little bit optimistic. So I'm very pleased at that, and thank you again for, for everything.
All right, thank you. Um, is there anybody else here, audience that would like to speak on this occasion? Anybody else online or on the phone that would like to speak regarding this application? All right, hereina, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, thoughts, questions? Or actually, yeah, I was just gonna say, you can come back now and answer, but I just thought, I mean, like, okay.
I appreciate that.
The people online, we're gonna have the applicant come back and answer some questions and more discussion.
Um, let me tell you about our approach to this project. Given the history of the Dine Hard discussion, back and forth, and seeing the, um, point in time where adjacent development was allowed without providing a thirty-five foot right away. We saw one time, there was some discussion of that being a center line of a road, the property line. That didn't happen. And could, could I possibly get page thirty-four of the packet shown? What I want you to realize is that asking for additional thirty-five feet does impact the school site. Yeah, this one right here would be great. There was some discussion of offset from the school. The, um, I've got a number of the, of the report items that I want to address, but just the road is the big topic. So I think we should just get right into that, and I will. This is looking at the expansion area of the school. You can see expansions off this side of the school. It's also off another, another wing. There are elements of this that are important to realize. The placement of this addition has to do with a, a number of issues important to school function. So there is visibility lines, observation lines that are in place. There are adjacencies that are in place that make it important. There is configuration of the school. Many of you that may remember, years and years ago, the school had a number of problems with ice coming off it and a number of things. We've worked hard to do fixes to the school that operates very well now with regard to snowshed. And this continuation that we're talking about has to do with maintaining the, the configuration of the school or economical construction for continuity of their system of dealing with snow with the building. Also, in order to accomplish this, there's life safety issues that are required by the building code. For instance, allowable area, by doing these additions, we have to separate this building. It's a good place for a firewall where we're putting it. That can be accomplished. So there's a lot of detail into the placement of this building. I think there was some reference in the report saying potentially with the seventy foot, we could reconfigure and place that in different things, in different areas. Well, there's a lot of costs involved with that. There's function, functional concerns involved with that. So I wanted to at least, first of all, mention, show you this image to now, to give you an idea of the close proximity adding this collector would be. Just wanted everybody to have a fair view of what is going on there. So when we were looking at it before, it was to the existing building, not to the planned additions on the school. So we're, we're gonna talk about items number two on the conditions of approval, which we disagree with to, for taking a total of seventy feet, say thirty-five. That was briefly discussed before this was made, that it wasn't a necessary road at the time of Fox Ridge. We're also gonna talk about, um, uh, condition of approval number seven as well. So I'm gonna ask Joe Barton, who performed the traffic study, to talk a little bit about what the roadway situation is. We have looked at it as if, what do we do if there is no collector road? Because we feel like that decision was already made. We're trying to turn back the clock at the detriment of the school. National land. So we, we just wanna talk about our procedures, our philosophy, how we would deal with it onsite as our own issue. How to alleviate some of the traffic problems internally, under the premise that there is no road going through. So at that, maybe Joe can come into the media and talk to those two items.
Yeah, so this is Joe Barton with Paragon Consulting. Uh, we did do the two thousand nineteen traffic flow analysis, which some of the exhibits in your packet are from. Uh, we also did the, I believe it was twenty twenty-one traffic impact study, which we have had some review comments on. So just quickly addressing that, because I believe Morgan brought it up. Uh, we have went through a couple of rounds of review on the TIS and kind of the concept layouts. Um, we formally responded to the first engineering review letter, and we had a meeting following the engineer two letter, but did not formally respond to that, pending working out and the discussion of the seventy-foot easement. Um, so I guess, um, a couple of things, as far as the traffic goes. As Bill said, we assumed when we looked at this that, uh, the collector roadway did not proceed through the south boundary of the school. And I guess our view partially on that is, has a little bit to do with what I think I heard the commission's legal counsel allude to is that the expansion of the school facility as proposed does not in itself necessitate a seventy-foot collector roadway along the school's boundary. Now, that being said, the work that Horrocks is doing certainly may shed some light on what the area looks like overall. But the school's proposal in itself doesn't necessitate a roadway up through the school property. Development to the east may, um, the global or the southeast area traffic model may show that, but the school development or expansion in itself does not. And then, as far as what the school's plans are for, for construction with the application, I think Brian laid it out fairly well, um, in the beginning in the staff report from, for the roadway stuff. Um, we have, you know, as on the exhibit that's up on the screen now, the level grass playing, play field area, um, and then the intersection between the middle school circulation road and the road up to the elementary school. There we go, thank you. Um, so that, straightening that out with the proposed construction for the, for the expansion at the middle school. Um, we also had the relocating the handicap parking included at the middle school, relocating that out to the center parking area, so we can expand that student drop off and pickup area. Um, and we also had some accommodations to bring pathway up along with the roadway to accommodate bike and pedestrian into, into the site and through the site where we're doing construction, connecting to the, some of the existing bike and pedestrian facilities that are already, already on the campus. Um, and through looking at the traffic that the school currently generates and what the school's potential to generate with the expansion, what RTIS indicates, um, and we included, just for background, we included an additional twenty-five percent growth of local traffic at the intersections and on the roadway. Um, when we analyzed, uh, future conditions. So assuming that you've got an additional twenty-five percent traffic on Spring Mountain, Sampson Trail, Dine Hard, plus the school's potential additional traffic. And what RTIS shows currently is that with these reconfigurations that we just discussed, um, and the current approaches to the public roadways will work up to the current school capacity, which is eight hundred and fifty students. And at that point, RTIS recommends that, uh, the school and the city start looking at what would be a later phase of improvements, which would include some additional changes at the northern approach, to make that a two-way approach. Some additional changes at Sampson and, and Dine Hard, or Spring Mountain, as it's labeled on this map, in Dine Hard. And some of those changes to keep traffic at least, traffic delays at least at the level they are currently. Now, what RTIS, which incorporates the school traffic, doesn't do, other than just adding a twenty-five percent baseline traffic, it doesn't account for, um, development across the street. It doesn't account for development east and south. Those would typically come from those developments, their traffic impact studies. And the work that Horrocks is doing for the city can take all of that into account more globally. So that is the, kind of the plan, the phased plan of, of attack for the traffic and the roadway from the school's standpoint. Um, I did notice in, I believe it was, let me, one of the conditions here. So, yeah, it is, it's condition seven, and it talks about implementing all of the modifications shown on this exhibit that's up on the screen now. And in the timeframe that was in the two thousand nineteen traffic flow analysis. Well, the timeframe in the two thousand nineteen traffic flow analysis, first of all, was pre-school bond, pre-middle school expansion discussion. It was more of an internal, how do we handle traffic circulation on the school site? And the schedule that was in there is, is actually already passed. So I think there needs to be some clarification on when and what these improvements are. Um, the second piece of that is, if it's all improvement shown on the exhibit that's on your screen, the improvements for traffic circulation internal at the elementary school are completely independent and separate from what the expansion of the middle school is. Um, any traffic circulation, and yes, it may be tedious for parent-student pickup drop off times at the elementary school, but those are all completely contained within the school's property and their current roadway. property and their current roadway system. So that piece of potential construction at the elementary school, we feel is independent and a separate item from, from the school expansion at the middle school. And the school, when they asked us to first look at the traffic flow internally, what they were really looking at is how do we handle this internally? How do we, how do we try to accommodate traffic flow? Better accommodate student drop off and pickup onsite without impacting the public roadway system. And so that was the purpose of this, this initial 2019 report. And then jump ahead to the 2021 traffic impact study. That's where we really addressed more the potential traffic impacts to the public roadway system that the school could have with the expansion. And so that's kind of the, the background on the traffic site. There's one other condition that I would like to address real quickly while I've got the floor. It was condition three, which talks, speaks to the internal pathways on the school, which we have, I don't know if there's an exhibit in the packet or not, but we have several portions of pathway on the school. Yeah, it's in there somewhere. That, there we go, that are proposed for construction with the school expansion project, essentially all the, the light blue sections. The dark blue are existing pathways. Some of those pathways are five foot, some of them are eight foot, but they're already existing in there and maybe even some of them are ten foot. So the way that condition three is written and expanding everything to ten feet to match the standards through our prior meetings with staff. It was at least my understanding that internal pathways were acceptable at the eight foot. I don't think that's necessarily a, you know, a killing point of, of the conditions, but I just wanted to bring that up. Cause it was a little bit different than we had discussed previously. Now, if it was an extension of the city's pathway, then that completely makes sense to get it to that ten foot minimum width. Bill, I think those are the couple of things I wanted to address. I'll turn it back over to you, but I'll certainly answer any, any questions the commission might have on the, the traffic and kind of the schedule of, of events that the school planned for roadway and traffic improvements.
Commissioners, you have any questions at this point?
I just have two more items I'd like to address real quickly. One is additional approval number four that talks about long-term bike storage. We understand where that requirement was generated from, however, looking at that, we're asking for forty-two long-term bike storage locations at four short term. I believe. Situation that's been, wasn't covered bike storage areas. Whether it's in climate, parents don't prefer people on bikes and send them to the school. Seems like an excessive amount of permanent covered bike storage. When historically we're not seeing anything nearing that magnitude of we could potentially see increasing the short-term storage, which is less expensive for a district to construct. And we're all about trying to put the resources towards their needs. And so if we see something that we don't think is appropriate, we'll bring it forward for your consideration to potentially modify that item as far as recommendation. Big parking. Let me meet those quantities. The other has to do the requirement number six, it talks about adding buffer area to the parking lot. Brian, could you bring back up that site? Yeah, that's, that should be fine. I just want to point out that primarily offering is used to offer from residential is one of the ones used to talking about, I believe, in this area and possibly on, on this end of the, this part, portion of the parking lot. This is potentially a zero setback area. You can see we have generous setbacks right now, not really seeing the benefit of, of the buffer in those particular locations. Matter of fact, we think it may be district's ability to deal with snow removal and storage a little more difficult. So that's when we're not really seeing a benefit of that requirement. The other thing is generally with schools and school security, we do like to have some level of transparency. So activity can be noted by neighbors and other folks passing by and watching us. And we want it to be devoid of landscaping, obviously, but given some of the elevation differences. Santino Spring Mountain is listed there. We don't know if that's the best use of funds as well. For that conditions, we don't know many problems caused by lack of that extent of landscaping over the use of the school. So just thought we'd bring that one forward for your consideration as well. My last comment is what we're really doing is hoping for recommendation of approval without the district being compelled to provide that seventy foot right away. That would impact use of school. And that I'd stand with any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Bill? Or the engineering?
Does your current expansion push, it doesn't push into the seventy foot right away, correct?
Correct. It does not. It does not.
Okay.
The concerns of close proximity, however, are when we're dealing with this as an issue of internal roads. Traffic is, obviously we have peak hour traffic numbers, but traffic is generally high at times that school is not in session. Right? This bringing and picking up. So as far as any kind of disturbance from noise, trucks going by, it will be a much different level with a collector with five hundred homes up the hill. And I know there was talk about during construction and, and we were talking, we could use a different entrance. So the construction wouldn't necessarily impact the operation of school. Think that was a good idea. However, we don't know what the future use and what the next five hundred of the, in that area or whatever, whatever number there is, how that'll impact the school with that close proximity on a daily basis. Also note that playground area is very close. And so we're dealing with some of the logistics of what's there in trying to accommodate minor expansion in a responsible way. That's a good use of dollars on the building.
So there's no way for the people that would be living in these five hundred houses that are to this east and the south, for them to get into the school system, other than the going around and getting on Spring Mountain and going in through Dineheart? That's, that's the only way then, right?
Bill, I think I can address that. So we had had discussions about that in providing an access onto the school, but not necessarily a connected roadway through the school because of the cut through traffic. You know, possibly bringing in a cul-de-sac in a parking area and then with a connected pathway system to the, to schools from kind of that southeast corner. So there would be access to the school if that type of a scenario was put into place. But without the collector roadway or the traffic being able to use the school as a, as a cut through.
So you'd become a one-way deal. You couldn't go from the school to the houses that be going, you just go from the houses to the school? Is that?
Well, essentially you would have a separate parking area kind of in that southeast corner possibly. And then pathways into the school. So you would come into and then go back into the development to the east or the southeast there. So there would be access to the school, just not through the school, if that makes sense.
Through the roads of the school, the existing roads right now, then, that we're talking about, correct?
Yeah, what the school would not want to see is the existing internal roads connected through, because then everybody, and assuming it's still not a public road, it's school access roads, everyone is going to use those facilities as a public road and they're going to cut through. So the intent would be to bring a access, a parking facility into the property, but not connect the driving, the drive lanes through the school property. I don't know if I'm not explaining that well, probably.
I think Tony, if he's, Tony, I can show you kind of right here. If you're the, I'm thinking we talked about is like just bringing in something that comes in and accesses from this. Like they can park here, but they're not going to connect. So they can't drive.
The school roads, you know?
And the pathways would, but pretty sure that's what he's talking about. They would connect them right there, but not into the roads. It would just, you could drop off and the thing. So I'm guessing that's what he means, but that shows a little bit better on this one.
I can't see what you're pointing at, but that sounds like what I'm trying to.
Just a little bit closer map view of that southeast corner where the potential development of butts the the elementary and it's where you potentially have like a cul-de-sac or a parking area that but not connected to the parking lot to drive in. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, right there. Exactly what you're.
It all stops right there. Okay.
And then pathway system into the school. So you could park and, and come in and use the pathways to get to the schools. Yes.
Are we still have a public hearing? Can I ask, ask a question?
Yeah, public hearing is closed.
Are you allowed? I don't, I don't know your name.
He's the applicant and it was set up to have him come back after a public comment. So he could comment during, during the questions.
Introduce himself, but I don't know who it was.
He did originally. Yeah. Phil Hamilton with the school, but he did originally introduce himself as the applicant. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this point or the engineer? Okay, I have some more. All right, that commissars discussion.
I'd kind of like to hear from city staff on a couple of these. I guess a couple of the conditions of approval that, you know, they pointed out was let's just start with the parking lot and put in the buffer in the middle of it and increase in that to ten percent parking lot area. I guess what is your reasoning behind that?
So one Sampson Trail is a scenic route. So that's part of it. But then also more so the requirements that fifty parking lots of fifty thousand squares or greater have at least ten percent interior landscaping. It's a fairly new requirement. So it doesn't seem terribly logical to require them to rip up the whole thing and redesign the whole parking lot. And so instead a compromise was to apply the scenic route landscape standards. All to that.
What do you mean by interior landscaping?
So if you go to a big, you know, Home Depot, big box stores or anything, they've got the little islands with.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Just to break up the flat space.
Yeah. So it's not just a pure big expansive.
It does have a pretty good slope up to it. It really, right. I mean, so are you thinking along that pathway or up above that where the other kind of curved road comes down? Where are you asking for more?
I would personally put it on the hillside here. And then, you know, a few over here, maybe a couple over here, right? Like it's kind of in this general area.
So not in the middle of the parking lot then? So you're just requesting some buffering on the edges so that as you drive down Sampson Trail, it's hidden a little bit? Okay.
That have a lot of slope up to it though. It's a really, I don't know, you're not really seeing it a whole lot from Sampson Trail that it's really, because it sets back so far. So I I guess without being there, I mean, you get there and you're just going to go on your back and forth, but it goes quite a ways up the hill. And then the school's back even farther. So it's not like you're seeing a big old building.
Right. Yeah, the parking lot and the building are fairly.
You can't see what's in the parking lot until you.
It is a fairly.
Turn into it.
Yeah, but it is a fairly bare hillside with not a lot of character to it. And it could be improved in my opinion.
One other question that for staff, I guess, what's the fire department say about this? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the lines here and they're kind of close together. And if this something, if something happened at the state of Barbara Morgan Elementary Schools, is it was, if I think that's what it is. I would, how would the fire suppression or fire trucks get in there if all this traffic is, is in place at the time that this, that something happened? I mean, is there, is there another way to get to the school here? It looks to me like you've got the entrances and that's, they're all on Sam or on Spring Mountain Ranch. So what, what does the fire department say about that?
Fire department did not provide any comment on traffic patterns, other than any updated traffic plans, but internally would need to be re-approved by the fire chief.
So they've seen it and they, they basically, they signed off on it or they just haven't said anything yet?
They have not. The fire chief provides all in comments. Fire sprinkler and alarm systems will need to be submitted to the Idaho State Fire Marshal's office for plan review. The traffic plan, including any gates, will need to be approved by the fire district.
There's no traffic plan, so they haven't approved it. Another question is condition four with specifically the forty-two long-term or bike. Disagree with more people riding bicycles. But yes, that's just part of our general code for, for everything.
Standards for bicycle parking. And if parking is covered, bikes will get rusty in the rain and people are more likely to ride them in inclement weather. And with students, they're going to be there all day and needs to be a long-term.
Okay. Yeah. So maybe long-term, I guess I was thinking about that a little bit incorrectly. I was thinking like more long-term storage at like, say an apartment building or something to where you'd secure it. But you're thinking more just protected from the elements while students are at school.
And item seventy, you mentioned that, that actually had something to do with the elementary as well. So there was conditions in there. So it was.
Yeah. So their, their traffic flowing plan is parcel wide. It is encompassing the entire site. Or less, if an easement is not granted, they do that. They follow their plan and they do what they say they're going to.
If an easement is not granted.
Right. If an easement is not required, if an easement is required, then that, like I said, is going to probably necessitate some changes to how traffic moves in and out.
How does that relate to number seven? If it's going back to the old traffic plan? Is that something that if there is an easement, we still need that in there? Or I mean, actually, Lawrence, I mean, I know we were talking about being able to everything moving forward potentially with the easement in place that allows them not have to get delayed, but almost seems like they should, we should have the full traffic study that's being done first. It takes in consideration the area because if that's the main concern or one of the main concerns is overall traffic for the area, you got the state eighty, you got the other southeast. southeast corner or southwest corner, or even though that's not school, but it's that intersection. And then potentially the other development, either it goes through here or not, it is going to affect that intersection, which is part of the school. So and it clearly sounds like the school does not really want to do the seventy-foot easement, so I mean, I think we almost have to have more complete study before we can make a real good decision.
That's, I mean, it kind of seems that way to me too. It's a kind of a catch twenty-two. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate the school not wanting a, you know, seventy foot, seventy-foot easement running through their property, but at the same time, we don't know what, you know, things are going to bring us with growth in the next few years, so to some extent it's a requirement. I don't know, I, I feel like I don't have enough information to really know what to do here personally.
I, I think I kind of agree with that sentiment, um, although I do, I, you know, I had an experience, uh, here recently, uh, with a football game. Um, and just those, those roads are terribly inadequate and I, I participated in dropping off my kids and, and picking them up. You know, many days and it's really, you know, this, this whole kind of jog into the elementary school and the uphill and the queuing that happens there, it's just kind of a, it's kind of a mess in there and I, what I think about the seventy-foot easement, you know, whether it's seventy or fifty or it opens that discussion. Um, and it also, it also opens, i- i- it opens up the discussion between the city and the school district and the, the, um, the developer to the east there. Um, and really potentially have that development as a partner in upgrading y- y- your, your intersection at Dine Hard and Sampson Trail, um, to kind of clean up what is there? I, I dropped my kid off at, at one of the last home football games and there were people parked on both sides of the road. The road's completely inadequate. I, I really got nervous that were something to happen at that game. Um, the fire trucks wouldn't be able to make it in, the ambulance wouldn't be able to make it in. And would I be able to get back in and retrieve my, my child from the game too? And I, I understand that's, you know, that's football games in the fall. But it's indicative of, of the growth that probably we, we will see and the traffic that we will see in the future at our elementary school and our, and our middle school. So I, I, I think in, in my mind, that easement through there opens the door to discussion and to really clean up something that, that I personally feel like is a, is a unsafe condition and, and heading to an uns safer condition, both, both in the school property and at that intersection.
Liz, do you have some thoughts?
Oh, yeah, I, I kind of agree with the, the way we're all going in terms of the conversation. Um, I have a hard time seeing how accommodating an additional hundred and twenty students doesn't increase traffic. I mean, it just seems like that, that, that I just don't see the logic there. And I think the seventy-foot easement is a way to allow the school to proceed uh, without having to wait for the city to, to finish out the traffic study. And if the school isn't, doesn't want to, to give up that easement, then I think we do need to wait for the traffic study. So I, I think if, if they're in a push to proceed, this is a way we can allow them to do that, but, but absent that, I'm really hesitant to to totally agree with, you know, expanding the school as much as it's necessary without understanding the traffic impacts, especially considering it's a conditional use permit and one of the conditions that has to be harmonious with the neighborhood and it can't, uh, you know, create negative impacts on traffic. So I think to do our due diligence to evaluate it as a conditional use, we have to incorporate the impacts to traffic.
Why doesn't the school want to give up the easement? Give the easement, I should say.
As they were discussing the potential expansion, there's those issues that he had with that.
It changes the character of the whole campus, I think.
And I think it also, you know, there's the, the expansion that's, um, you know, identified now as well as future expansion. So if there's future expansion, then that might start encroaching on that easement.
When is the more thorough traffic study completed?
Aaron, would you like to speak on the timing of that?
Yeah, in working with, with Nathan and Morgan, our, our hope was to have that done um, in early December, so we could talk about that for the, so we can begin to, to talk about some of the recommendations from that study.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, I'm kind of with Liz and I think she said it really well, like, you know, it's, it's hard to go forward without the easement today. Well, I, I would like to personally wait until we have more information on the table, so we can make a more educated kind of decision on what needs to happen here.
I agree.
Well, it basically sounds like we're all kind of in agreement that unless the applicant wants to move forward with the current conditions, we would prefer, or we would table this until we get the additional traffic study, which would most likely put it into our January meeting before we'd be able to have it noticed and everything. So we won't be able to do it on the December one, early.
You continue a date specific.
Yeah, we would, yeah, exactly. Oh, somebody?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Brian. Brian said what I was going to interject.
Yeah. So, but there's probably no reason to try to push it on the December. I'm sure that probably wouldn't work anyway. So with that, I guess it's a question for the applicant. I don't, doesn't sound like you're really, really want to move forward with what we have at this point. Okay. So that would also allow some more time with the staff to potentially talk about the buffer, buffering, because it may not be needed as much, so maybe staff could go and look a little bit more. I think maybe to also consider some of the bike parking, because it does make sense that a big portion of the school year, you're not going to ride that many bikes, so maybe there's some, some workout with there that we could still, you know, some expansion, but I mean, I know it's code, so I don't know how much of there, of that is a little bit good, could maybe still be some more discussions with, with the applicant. And so I guess we're open to motion on continuing the item to allow time to get, and I don't want to create the motion, but I guess I'm just talking out loud, my thoughts are.
Go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, go, go for it.
To, uh, have time to get the complete traffic model and done for the area.
You got a date, the January meeting?
So first Tuesday is the third, which is the day after New Year's is observed.
Right.
So I had tentatively planned the tenth.
Uh, just. We'd probably push that to the tenth. Can we be less specific and say the third or the tenth, whatever the January meeting is?
Sorry, sorry, it took me a second to click the button. Um, typically we want to continue to a date certain, it sounds like because of the intervening holidays, that's hard. Brian, I'm not sure if, if maybe you can just provide them with a date, that would be my preference to have a date certain for the continuance.
The tenth.
I would say it's easier and safer to do the tenth with commissioners present. Any issues on that at this point, but I'm thinking that's going to be the easiest.
That's no issue here.
Okay. And with that, it'll still be an open, it'll be an open meeting, so we'd have public comment again, okay, so make sure we have that as well.
I move to continue the discussion on CUP twenty-one oh three and DR twenty-one thirty-three, the middle school expansion to the January tenth, um, commission meeting. Um, so that we can introduce the traffic study, the more in-depth city traffic.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion has carried and we will have a continued on to that meeting and that report. Thank you. All right, uh, moving to the next item is design review twenty-two twenty-four, uh, nineteen sixty, you think, West Road?
U D eighteen oh one.
Oh, did I miss one? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the St. Luke's one. It's too many notes around it. So go to the P U D eighteen oh one, uh, one thousand State Street with the St. Luke's. We have the applicant.
Yes, members of the commission, this is Jason Densmer with the land group. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, Jason.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Jason Densmer. I'm with the land group. We're at four six two East Shore Drive in Eagle. I'm here tonight representing St. Luke's and the McCall Memorial Hospital District. Um, in front of you tonight, we have an application to modify the development agreement that was entered into between the city and um, the hospital and the hospital district in March of twenty nineteen. At the time, that development agreement was tied to a subdivision, um, and some roadway realignments around the hospital expansion project. Many of those roadways have now been constructed, but a few of the elements that were required off-site improvements and are described in the development agreement are not quite completed yet. The original development agreement had a timeline for completion of all of the off-site improvements that will expire on December thirty-first of this year, twenty twenty-two. And we would, the purpose of tonight's, um, application to you is to modify the development agreement just to extend the completion date through July thirty-first of twenty twenty-three this coming year, so that we have a little bit more construction time to finish the elements that are not quite wrapped up yet. Your staff has reviewed it and my understanding from the, both the engineering departments and Brian's, um, report is that there are no concerns at staff. So we hope that you don't have any either and will send us forward to city council with a recommendation of approval. That's everything I wanted to bring up. I'm happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Okay, I think this one's pretty clear. Staff, anything additional on this? It seems pretty clear, just extension of time. All right, um, this is a public hearing, um, so we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody online or on the phone that would like to comment on this application? For St. Luke's? And you may need to hit star six if you do wish to speak regarding this. Is there anybody here? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or are we open to a motion?
I make a motion that we continue, or excuse me, that we, that we grant P U D eighteen oh one, that, uh, we, we grant the extension till July thirty-first, I think it was.
Recommend, recommendation.
Recommendation to July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to all in favor?
All.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion is carried. All right, Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, now we'll move on to design review twenty-two twenty-four nineteen, or to be determined, West Road, I should say. Come on up.
Hello, my name's Jeff Latham. Uh, I live at sixteen ninety West Road, at least I think. I have an application designed to, uh, go home on my property. Uh, we had two separate lots next to each other. We combined them into one. The reason we did that was so that we wouldn't have to build a sewer line over an existing sewer line. We have a three hundred square foot house on what was this, one of the properties. And we don't want to live in a three hundred square foot house forever. My wife's a teacher here in McCall and, um, we'd like to build a desert house on the property and live in it. If we combine the properties, the sewer district, uh, which we did, and the sewer district gave us a, uh, sewer permit so that we could tap into the former line we already have tapped into the mail. Cleaned that up first of all.
So you're living in a three hundred square foot house?
Yeah.
With your wife and children and.
Yeah, and if my son wasn't going to get older, I would.
All right, commissars, any questions for the applicant? All right, we'll go to staff report. Thank you.
Uh, so yes, this one, uh, just, the address confusion, uh, we discovered afternoon that, uh, sixteen ninety West Road is actually, uh, just to the north of this, a complete, uh, confirmed address has not been assigned to this property as of yet. Except that they must be getting mail or emergency services somewhere to the three hundred foot cabin. I don't quite know it. Uh, so this is, yeah, pretty straightforward. It's a new build for a larger residence, uh, and it exists as an accessory building unit on the property. Similarly, the architecture would be typical, uh, newer build. It's a little bit larger area and then final engineering approval and that'll stand for any questions?
Any questions for Brian before we hear from Morgan? Right, Morgan?
So this was an easier project to review. They're in the county, they're on well, uh, they have a well service. Um, the only real concern is just showing how they're going to control their erosion during construction, so I just asked for some supplemental materials to show where B and Ps will be placed during construction um, and filling out a stormwater application. That's all I need for final engineering approval.
All right. Uh, commissioners, any questions for staff before we open up for a public hearing? Are you hearing none? All right, we'll open this for a public hearing. Uh, is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment on this application? Once again, you may need to hit star six if you're muted. Is anybody here at Legion Hall? Is he not? All right, all right, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Um, commissioners, any questions, thoughts, concerns? It seems pretty, right? On the conditions of approval, should we have one that verifies, make sure we get the correct address?
Addressing is the building permit regardless.
So they'll clear it all up at that point, okay, so we don't have to put anything extra for that? It's going to be two addresses.
Uh, no, well, it's like we'll be at or consideration, uh, but again, that'll.
Okay. Which is there? About the only question I have on it. Building's later.
I have any questions? It's good.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move to approve twenty-two twenty-four.
Second.
Motion to, motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion is carried. Okay. Now we got, let's see. Doning twenty-two oh one, record of survey twenty-two sixteen for one four one four one, Highway fifty-five. Eric, I know we have you on the phones, I heard from you earlier. Do you like to present your application? May need to hit star six. She's at the two seven one. May need to hit star six. She's at the two seven one six five nine one. She's still with us. Erica, are you there? Will you be presenting, or do you have somebody else that would present your application?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes.
Yeah, um, yeah, basically, I'm just, I have a thirteen acre parcel out here along Highway fifty-five at one four, one four, one. And I'm proposing to divide the thirteen acres into eight acres and five acres. With the idea that I would then have two separate parcels that at some point could, you know, I could sell the five acres or not. I conducted the water monitoring and had the septic inspector look at the test holes on the proposed five acre parcel, and two of the holes were approved for septic system. I did that at the recommendation at the pre-application hearing earlier this year. And I don't know, that's pretty simple, what I'm hoping to do. It would require rezoning to, I guess, rural, or residential estate zoning, so. If I can answer any questions, I'm happy to do that.
Commissioners, any questions for Erica? Pretty straightforward when we edit in the pre-plan. Yeah, I think my biggest concern was making sure she had subject approval. The staff report on?
Yeah, this is one that if they tell her that they have their friend, it would be on your guys' consent agenda, and you guys would read the packet thoroughly, and we'd never have to discuss it. Okay, instead, we're going through a rezone on it. The comprehensive plan on this calls for residential estate or large residential, which one of the implementing zones on that is residential estates. So this is consistent with the future land use plan and the conference plan. And yeah, pretty straightforward.
Any additional, I know there's no sewer or septic. I mean, there's septic and there's no lava reason.
Nothing too much, no comments on the rezoning. We're working with the applicant to get the record of survey to meet our standards, but that's about it.
And everything is good with the easement, the way it's there?
Um, I proposed, I haven't looked at the most updated version. I proposed that driveway easement so that services could come through, but I haven't looked at the updated one that came in this morning.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the staff before we open the public hearing? All right, with that, we'll open this to public hearing. Is there anybody online or on the phone that would like to comment regarding this application? And they may need, may need to hit star six if you want to come. I've seen there's nobody here at any facility that would like to comment either. No comments, we will close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion. Again, this is pretty straightforward. It fits the zoning requirements. They got the septic approval. I think we got the information in the packet from the highway. It's refined with the driveway correctly. We did get that correct?
Think so, I guess.
Hey, any questions for staff or commissioners? Any questions or?
I move to approve zoning twenty-two oh one and record of survey twenty-two sixteen.
Second. You have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, Commissioners, this is Meredith. I'm going to need a separate motion, right, Brian, for the rezone? Or is the rezone straight through?
Rezones recommendation, record of survey is an approval, so, yeah, Meredith's great.
Okay, well, then we need to restate, let me restate.
And this will be to the Board of County Commissioners, please.
The rezone was the recommendation?
Yes, please.
All right, I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners the rezone twenty-two zero one.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to recommend approval for the rezone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion is approved. All right.
Good job.
I move to approve record of survey twenty-two sixteen.
Second.
Second.
You have a second plus? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, record of survey twenty-two sixteen is also approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Eric. All right.
Thank you.
All right, and we move to zoning, it's in twenty-two oh two. Once again, we get the McCall School District. Is it, was that basin or who?
Hi, it's Kirsten Dietrich. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Hello, let me just, give me one second. Let me get prepared. Okay, so I, I'm Kirsten Dietrich, and I am, I also work for the Land Group. We're located at four, six, two East Shore Drive in Eagle, Idaho. I'm speaking on behalf of the McCall Donnelly School District tonight for their rezone of a parcel that was presented in a pre-application prior. This is, what's our number? Let's see here. Second, I just want to make sure I say this correctly for your record. So we are there's just so many good projects here on the agenda. I lost my own. See, Meredith, what's our number again, if you're there? Oh, let's see.
Twenty-two oh two.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Oh, I am the end, okay. So this is, the, this project is to rezone two parcels that the McCall Donnelly School District owns. The sole purpose of rezoning is for the school district to develop teacher housing on the northern parcel. And then the southern parcel would then be sold at auction to accrue funds for developing the northern parcel. The Land Group has taken great care to prepare this project by meeting with staff beforehand to understand what's required to true up property requirements as a result of the rezone, also in conjunction with a record of survey application that's also in process. To speak to that more specifically, we've made sure to properly include site access easements, sewer district easement that's in process and paired with our, our record of survey, and we're also prepared to provide snow storage easements as required with our new development. One, I believe that we don't have any major comments that came from our previous pre-application meeting. The one change that has occurred since that timeframe is that the, this rezone received unanimous approval from the Payette Lakes Recreational Sewer and Water District at their recent board meeting. So that was great news in supporting the project. I don't really have much to say on this because we haven't received any comments other than in support of the work that we've already done. I think that we kind of have everything, everything in place to get to the next step in our application, which would be a design review application to more properly spell out what would happen on the northern parcel. So for right now, this is just about the rezone. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer anything. Otherwise, that would be it for this one.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for Kristen? Seems pretty straightforward once again. Staff?
Yes, thank you. Yes, the application is for a rezone from civic to residential eight units per acre. The comprehensive plan, future land use map, actually calls for high density residential in this, which would typically be R sixteen. This specific site doing a thorough look on it would be difficult, if not possible, to develop to that intensity, given the, there's some access constraints and topographies and probably let land in there. So like a fitting designation. As Kristen mentioned, this has gone through the sewer, it's already, they're born. Increased permitting on it, yeah, that'll stand for your questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Brian before we go to Morgan? Right, Morgan?
I don't really have any comments on the rezoning. All my comments come in the design review. Those nitty gritty details of traffic, clothes and utilities.
Didn't want to pass you by, just in case. All right. With that, we'll, any questions for Morgan by chance, even though there's nothing for her to do right now, but just in case? All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody online, on the phone that would wish to comment regarding this application? And you may need to hit star six if you're muted.
Nobody left.
Nobody left? And nobody here in the evening, so, would you like to, we do have upcoming.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff, and applicant. My name is Craig Groves. I reside at one fifty-four Shadows Trail, Donnelly, Idaho. I'm fairly familiar with this property, and I support workforce housing, staff housing, and so on and so forth. My concern is that as a commission, you know, the biggest thing that you can do is zone properly. Zone properties properly. I personally don't believe an R eight zone is adequate for this site. It should be absolutely R sixteen. I've walked the entire site over a two-day period. I've looked at the site in detail. It is close to downtown. It's in walking distance to downtown. This community has a significant housing issue. And as Commissioners, the way you help with that issue is to zone properties properly. And I would ask you to maybe reconsider the zoning designation from R eight to R sixteen. Thank you.
Any other public comment, either here, I'm just not here, or anybody else online? Hearing none, we will close public comment. Commissioners, questions, comments, discussions with staff?
Question for staff, what's the difference between R eight and R sixteen? And I don't know why. I've been a very long.
He is the, the number at the end of the R. So R four is residential, up to four units per acre. R eight is eight, sixteen is.
Fifteen units per acre. Okay, I see.
That's.
Thank you.
Associated minimum lot size is three fringes, that sort of thing to go along with each of those as well.
Okay.
So it's currently zoned civic.
Yeah.
So it's not zoned R sixteen, so I guess the question today is to rezone from civic to R eight.
One thing.
Recommend rezoning to R sixteen, that doesn't limit the, the future growth of it to if they only want to put eight units per acre on it, they still can, right? So if we were to rezone to R sixteen, that would give more flexibility to the construction.
This is Kirsten Dietrich. I, Brian, am I allowed to comment on that from our neighborhood meeting?
Yes, because it was discussion, so it would be appropriate for that was brought up to be able to reply to it.
Yeah, so we did, the Land Group hosted a neighborhood meeting at the school district, or I'm sorry, at this high school across from the location of these parcels. And the biggest question that we did receive from the Wildwoods condominium neighbors, which is the closest parcel in proximity to this potential future development, was the concern over the density of housing that would be surrounding their condominium plats. And I guess to speak on those plats as a neighbor, it's a pretty complicated, like historically grandfathered in plat that these parcels surround. So the, and that creates challenges because their site access is so close to ours and so on and so forth. So I guess they, they, they had major concerns about the development that'll envelop their plat. So I'll say that, that's why we, as the, as the consultant for the school district opted not to push the R sixteen density. However, that was mainly in relation to the school district's direction for development on the northern parcel. Their intent is only to develop it to R eight based on topographical constraints of the northern parcel. And kind of to speak to that, I don't know if everyone's familiar with that corner of Stibnight. When you're heading towards town, there is kind of a drop-off from Stibnight down into that northern parcel. Yeah, there you go. So that, the northern parcel presents challenges for R sixteen, and it's also abutting a parcel that is zoned R eight already. So that was the reason that we chose the path that we did for rezone. That being said, the southern parcel, even if we did rezone it to R eight, it's going to auction to developers. They could come back and do another rezone to R sixteen if they so choose. Or at this time, you could approve the R eight on the northern parcel with the condition that, you know, R sixteen is a requirement of development of the southern parcel. If that, that's another avenue there. I would say there's no way to get more than R eight on the northern parcel with what I think Brian just pulled it up on the mapping there. You can see the topography and site access. And keeping in mind that the parcel, those parcel lines that are shown there are not accurate any longer. Basically, the condo, the northern property line of the condos is going to carry straight over to the east. And so the north part will be kind of landlocked in a way that the southern parcel isn't, so. I hope that makes sense of it.
Thank you, Kristen. Also, Commissioners, this was noticed for a change to R eight. It wasn't noticed to a change of R sixteen. All the departments were given the plan as an R eight. I don't feel that we could change that to an R sixteen in this meeting without appropriate notices to the neighbors and all new agency comments. But I don't feel that we have the ability to change that. We either approve what we have or send it back. So I'm, we can't do that.
Yep, I understand.
And.
And Robert, this is Michelle Grunavell, I, Community and Economic Development Director. The other option is if you decide to rezone it to R eight, a future developer has an opportunity to also take advantage. We do have a density bonus for local housing units, to basically double the density without going through a zone change.
Yeah, I was going to say that, as well as, as Kristen mentioned, they can, a new developer. Yeah, I was gonna say that as well as, as Kristen mentioned, they can, a new developer is going to have that, what their plans are, could always come back to us. For additional zoning, knowing that in the comp plan, um, and also taking in consideration, the sewer district approved it based on an R eight zoning. So this would open a whole nother can of worms to try to change it at this point in time. Which we just can't. With that, any other comments and questions from commissioners? Open for a motion?
This is a recommendation of.
Recommendation to council, yeah.
I move to recommend the rezoning twenty-two oh two to city council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend approval to the rezone. All in favor?
Aye.
Right? All opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. All right. And with that. We move to others, is there signs?
I did sneak in a couple at the end later, earlier today. This is Meredith Todd, Assistant City Planner. I'm on the interwebs today. I'm gonna wait for Brian to scroll somewhere over. Like the button, oh, you did it. Okay, so we have natural grocers as one. You may have seen they're already working on getting that sign structure up.
That was more, gonna be one of my questions, because I saw that happening and I have it noted here. So I was hoping to see that on there, because I'm like, wait a minute, I see I'm working on it.
They did jump the gun just a little bit, but, um, it wasn't their fault. The sign company is the one that didn't tell them that they had to wait for an approval first.
Well, I know we did tell them that during their, but could you zoom in that a little bit more, Ryan, I'll kind of get a better idea of what they got going on?
That's not in here?
No.
Oh, okay. We're digging for it then.
That's, we're not okay.
That's a very good sign.
So it's gonna be a, a rather large sign, but, um, it, at this point, based on the design, does not violate signage code standards. I am going to ask the building official to check and make sure that it doesn't exceed the height, now that they've built it, without worrying about it too much. Um, because we do have a limit to the maximum height a sign is allowed to be. Um, but in terms of square footage, it meets code. Um. We did talk a lot about being flexible regarding how to accommodate some changeable signage, because there has been a lot of challenge in the area with. People needing to hire people at a moment's notice and advertise for that, um, people needing to change their hours. Due to lack of staff being available or other situations going on. So in reading the changeable signage code, um, I interpreted the ability to have a wood framed. Area available for signage to be a sturdily hung banner of some sort. Um, so they designed that into their freestanding monument sign, um, and it allows a little bit more flexibility for them. Um, and I'm anticipating they'll have some major hiring signs that they need to put up. And then the other sign that they've got is a wall sign on the building, um, just in that black and orange with the company logo. Um, that one shouldn't be lit at all. And then the monument sign will be, um, downcast with its lighting just a little bit. I did appreciate that they put some landscaping in the, the signage bed, too. That's always a nice way to spruce it up.
On the monument sign, what are they, are they gonna wrap the block that they're using or what's?
That's what they've indicated. I did drive by the cinder block and kind of go, ooh, let's see what happens there. Um, but based on their design, it should be wrapped in wood to match the building, um, and that's what the sign company has mentioned they're going to finish it with. We did both warn the architects or whomever that, um, wood at the very base where the snow is going to collect might not be amazing in a couple of years. But they can fix that when and if there's an issue with it.
Did you say it's lighted?
It's gonna be downcast, so there's going to be lights up in the top. Shooting towards the sign, but it won't have light coming through because we don't allow, um, internally lit signage anymore.
Good.
Yeah.
Next sign, oh, not next.
Oh, excuse me, Meredith, does the temporary sign that hangs below it, does that, how's that increase the square footage? Does it go over the max or is that included in that calculation?
No, it's included in the calculation. Um, initially, they were entirely at their maximum. So I gave them a call to let them know that wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do window decals or any of the things that grocery stores traditionally do, like talking about seasonal vegetables, et cetera. Um, and they said, oh, shoot, okay, let's redesign the entire thing and, and make some flexibility here. So that all fits within their allowable square footage. And I think they've got like point five or maybe two square feet left at the end of the day.
Lot of wiggle room.
Just those sandwich boards out on there is something.
Next sign, please. So much smaller scale, we have a ten square foot sign over in the, um, same development complex as like the Milestones Daycare. Um, the insurance company over there kind of tucked behind, um, Hometown Pizza. Um, they're just moving in and gonna have a private massage practice. Um, so that sign is going to be mounted straight on the building with no lighting proposed. It's just gonna be on aluminum and it meets all of the design guidelines, including some muted warm mountain tones. Um. Any questions on this one?
Massage parlor.
Looks reasonable.
And the last one. The last one is RE/MAX has relocated. Um, we did an administrative approval for the remodel to this building to take out that funny little. Green silo almost on the side of the building and switch it out for a more uniform front and also install some sidewalk. Um, and they're gonna be doing RE/MAX signage on the top floor and towards facing Dine Hard Street, so they're gonna be facing both ways. The sign facing Third Street is going to have some downcast lighting that will be hooded by the eaves of the roof on it. Um, and then they have square footage left for the building to have signage for whoever will be the lower. Floor of the building tenant. Um, so it's pretty modest in size. And they incorporated wood grain in the background because McCall is woody.
Well, if you talk to them, and I, I was gonna do it, I just haven't had a chance to bump into them, but they still have a sign, maybe two up at their old location. If, if you look at the Hotel McCall signage, they have the kind of the reader boards for each business. There's one RE/MAX sign still there, and I don't know if they have one on the upper one by Salmon River Brewery, if that one's still there or not. It's, but I know the one is, and I've been meaning to talk to Shane and I just haven't. So if you happen to mention it to him, they probably need to pull that one down.
Yep, I can do that.
I don't know if they've moved in yet. These are things I don't know about.
Well, they're not in, they're at the, uh, the building behind it that used to be next to, or back around the corner from where Seab, where Seabanos was, they're back there for now, so they're not at the location at Hotel McCall anymore.
Oh, okay, yes, we'll get that taken care of. Any other questions on signs? Any that you've noticed? Did anybody notice that Sublime Electric moved their car?
I'm just gonna ask you about that one.
It's like they pulled it into the driveway a little farther.
That's a side placement.
I think they're bringing a hot air balloon next.
Yep.
They got more plans for you, Meredith.
I know.
I think if they ask us.
Good points.
That's all I have.
Sounds good, thank you very much. Okay, and we've already, on the upcoming, upcoming meeting agendas. I forget, let's make sure we let, um, Christine and, I guess we're gonna know about the January meeting.
Yeah, I was gonna have the whole twenty twenty-three calendar.
Okay, so if we might, yeah, just so they don't, is there anything we need to know about December?
Well, yeah. If there are revisions to me, um, it's time for me to actually review them for this meeting. Uh, so they were not on the agenda, so they will be likely on December's agenda.
Brian or Michelle, are we still anticipating any joint work sessions on the impact area before the end of the year, or is that gonna be pushed farther?
I can answer that. Um, we just finalized that with the county and I think the city council and county commissioners are gonna have a meeting first, I believe, on January tenth. So we don't need to have any meetings with planning and zoning prior to that.
We'll have two meetings, so where are we gonna meet? Are they something to consider if they're gonna try to meet here, because we're having that meeting on January tenth?
Right.
Where are we? Well, now we kind of did.
Doing it. We will find an alternate location for one or the other. I would kind of think county commissioners.
Could do it in the county.
Could cascade.
Down there, what the heck?
Council could go down there, yeah.
And it actually might, it might actually be the twelfth. I feel like it could be a Thursday, so I'll confirm the date. So it may not interfere.
Okay, great. All right, I think that it's unless there's anything else on the agendas that we need to be aware of at this point.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting at six forty-five, forty-two.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're not waiting for three minutes. Second, have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
I never can trust that.
All right, I know there's none against, motion adjourn, or we are adjourned?
Nobody's against.